Good evening, everyone. Tonight is a work session of the South Kingstown Planning Board. The date is Tuesday, February 10, 2026. The time is 6:30 PM. We'll do row call next. Susan Axelrod. Liz Karp. Joe Murphy. Robin Pothy is absent. Kiper Wilson. Armin Monaco. And Maria Mack is here. On our agenda this evening, there's a request from the Director of Planning to move Item 3 on land use to be discussed first, so we will take Old Tower Hill Road Form-Based Code first. Jamie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, just some brief updates. The Town Council adjusted the start time for the work session planned on February 26, good thing it's not January, to 7:00 PM. I think we initially discussed 6:30. One thing also associated with that that occurred last night is they did approve an additional $3,000 expenditure which relates to amendment to a contract for $7,000 with Able City East for additional financial analysis of a few properties within the district as it relates to conventional development and development under the Form-Based Code. So they'll basically do a pro forma on a new development under the proposed code and the potential for a gross leasable area and the expansion of a footprint on the property.
That's good news.
And again, that would be done by DeDalias Group and Sean Bourgeois, who has been working on this project with Able City East for well over a year. Again, simply last month, we did go through the work in progress. We went through the, you know, the 1.5 district, our changes and potential setbacks. We're still working on what will be the trigger mechanism for the Form-Based Code as it relates to renovations to an existing building or in addition to an existing building. I had conversations with Pam Stacy King today. We're following up with a meeting this Thursday, and again, we'll continue to have those discussions. They're also working on revising the architecture. And if I can pull up, I have it. We can come back to it later in the meeting, but I do have some items that I did send Able City East as an example of some maybe more traditional coastal kind of South Kingstown architecture, and I'll share that with you before the meeting ends tonight. You don't want to see me go through, you know, 50 files to find the right one. Are there any questions on, you know, formatting and everything? I also know that Mike Gagis is here. He's the Chair of the EDC. And Mike, if you just want to, if it's okay, Madam Chair, if Mike can give us a brief update on where EDC is, on their review of the code, and, you know, where they stand.
Certainly. Thanks, Mike, for coming out tonight.
Thank you for inviting me. It's a good idea to get our heads together. Brian, how come we don't have a lawyer? They got a lawyer.
We have two.
You have two?
We have one spare for you.
Unbelievable. Okay, so where are we? So the, you're probably aware of the history, but this initiative started with the EDC back in like 2018 or sooner. And they did a survey of the existing, of the property owners at that time, and they asked them, "What do you want?" And they went through, it was a very good survey. I've seen the results of it. They also had some pictures and so forth, and what they want was more coverage over the property, higher height, less height restriction, and mixed use. So lo and behold, only, what, seven, eight, two, seven years later, we hire consultants. They come out with a report that says, "Hey, we should have more coverage, higher buildings, and mixed use." And so that's where this all started. For whatever reason, it fell by the wayside, and finally, Jamie, to his credit, did this right. And he hired consultants that were very, very good, the ones you are I educated, can't go wrong there. And they did a report, as we all know, and recommended the Form-Based Code and the like. The good thing about the way that this was done was that all the town people that wanted to be involved could be involved, and they all, many people came to these charrettes, 75, 80 people at a time, got to vote on what they thought were nice buildings and ugly buildings and all those kind of things, and you kind of got the voice of the community as to what they wanted. Okay, so I thought that's kind of where we ended up. Now we're going to get into the formal part of the process of going to the Town Council to get approvals and so forth. So I was joking with Brian because last night, we had a special meeting to approve the letter that we're sending to the Town Council, which I think we can share with them at this point since the Town Council's already got it.
I'm actually sharing it with them right now, so you'll have email copies.
Super. Okay, so this is, this is our position and our recommendation that we adopt this. And I understand that you have some improvements, some things you might, we might want to change that I'm sure makes sense as well. So we've done that. And in addition, this letter actually came, you're gonna love this. This letter came from, I recorded two videos, okay? One is, one is about the benefits of the Old Tower Hill, Old Tower Hill Road Neighborhood Plan to the residents of South Kingstown, and the other was, is what are the benefits to property owners and business owners? And they're both about five minutes apiece. They're out on YouTube. We can send them as well, I think.
They'll be in the same email.
Yep, so you can see those, okay? And Susan Marcus, really smart, she's trying to catch on to these new technologies and stuff, so she stuck, she stuck the two transcripts of the videos into a, into AI engine, and it spit out a letter, okay? So we kind of played around with that a little bit, and you know, that's what we ended up with essentially, is this, is this letter. Brian really, you know, shines it up really nicely, right? So it came out pretty good. And essentially, it outlines the five big ideas of the report. We know, we know what they are, right? Welcoming, I'm sorry, welcoming community, great spaces, access to nature and sustainability, financial benefit, and safe streets. Okay, these are the five big ideas, and those things are good for the residents of the town. Okay, they're good for the business owners as well. And the fifth, the fifth of those ideas, I think it was the fourth actually, but the fourth idea is economic vitality or economic improvement to the town, okay? And in that, we looked at the data, at the report that Datalis produced. He put a lot of economic and demographic data in there that I kind of power read these days and kind of flip through it really quick, but he did do two scenarios of a three-quarter acre piece of property under the old zoning and under the new zoning. He went through calculations, the standard stuff, basically, how much rent or net operating income can you get out of this property as it exists today? And it ends up to be, it ends up to be about $100,000 a year for a 10,000 square foot piece of property on a 33,000 square foot, a 33,000 square foot piece of property with a 10,000 square foot commercial property on it, one story high, you get, you get about $100,000 net operating income out of it. Okay, that translates into about a million dollars of property value, okay? You take that same property, you use the Form-Based Code, you, and you invest, as it turns out, you invest about $20 million in that piece of property, okay, in this example. And what happens is, first of all, you have three stories of residential rental income on top of a commercial revenue, which will, rental, which will be higher than the old tired building that we have today, and they would actually generate 1.5 million dollars worth of revenue, net operating income, a year, okay? As it turns out, that's a $30 million building instead of a million dollar building. I don't care if they're off by a factor of two. We're talking about 15 times, 15 million dollars worth of, worth of, worth of property value. They're investing 20 million, they're getting a $30 million building, that's a great return on investment, okay? And so that's sort of the economics of it. There are some objections. People would like to have, be grandfathered in. Current property owners don't want to have to conform to this code. Well, I don't want to put $20 million down on a piece of property and you have somebody else build a parking lot next to me, okay, with McDonald's, you know, that, that set back off the road. That kind of, it's a lose-lose. Everybody loses in that scenario. In the scenario where, where there isn't, where you can't recreate what we already have and can move forward, well, that's, that's a scenario where even the people who do not want to participate in this make out economically, right? Because they have residents next door that are coming down and going to their store, okay? And by the way, their property values are going to go up too, okay? And of course, when property values go up, that's good for the town. And we don't have any more commercial property that I know of, and not in my backyard either, okay? So a way to increase the commercial component of the tax base in the town is to increase the value of the property that we already have. And that's why this makes a lot of sense, and I think the grandfathering thing is something that makes sense also. And the last thing is that, hey, yeah, but my taxes are going to go up. Well, your property value is worth more, so your taxes are going to go up, but also, you know, if you're a $20 million investor and you've got a $30 million piece of property, you want great police coverage, fire, roads, and a town that people are going to be attracted to because you've made a big investment and you want to get your return on investment. So that's our position in a nutshell. And anyway, I'd be loved to hear any input that you have. We're going to be going to all the meetings like you will too, and I really would like to hear what, what your modifications are and your thoughts on, along those lines as well.
Thanks, Mike. Comments from board members?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Susan.
Shoot.
Hi, welcome tonight. I have a question for you. Just now, when you were running through the figures of how much rent a property owner could charge with the new development versus the, I think you called it the old tired development. For a 10,000 square foot property, what is the difference in monthly rent for a business in your new 10,000 square foot retail space versus the old tired one that you just referenced?
Yeah. Maybe I'm tired. I'm not sure about the tired part, but, but the current property can garner $18 a square foot of rent, and their expenses are going to be $10 a square foot, $8 a square foot. They're going to get $10,000, $10 a square foot on 10,000 pieces of property, they're getting a hundred grand a year in rental income, okay? That's the end of the whole story, okay? And there is a formula of taking a capitalization rate, which equals the net operating income divided by the property value, and you use that formula to generate, this place is going to be worth $1 million, okay? That's how that calculation works, and you'll see it in the presentations, in the presentations, okay? So that's that one. The commercial, the, under the new zoning, the awake zoning, it's, it's, you can charge, of course, the, the footprint is twice the size. It's not a 10,000 square foot building, but it's a 20,000 square foot building. And in fact, just a little nuance in the example, he also puts 5,000 square feet of commercial property on the second floor of the building, all right? So he gets 25,000 square foot. You can charge $31 a square foot for that. There's, there are expenses to that as well, but you end up generating about 650 grand a year in, in commercial rent, net, net operating income after expenses, right? And then he puts 50 units at $2,100 a month, you know, on the, on the upper floors, and that generates almost the same amount of money. You end up generating about a million and a half instead of the $100,000, which is 15 times. And because the buildings are more attractive and will, you know, will generate more, more traffic, the cap rates are lower, so that 15 to one advantage turns to a 30 to one advantage in the, in the valuation, but that's where the numbers come from. It's, and I've spot-checked these numbers too. Commercial property, $18 a square foot is not out of line. South County Commons charges close to $30 a square foot. So these aren't, this guy, Sean Bourgeois, okay, who's apparently going to be engaged further, is, he's done developments globally. He's been doing this forever. This is a teeny project compared to any of the other things he's ever worked on. He's immensely qualified to do this, and as I said, if he's off by a factor of two, we're still making hay. Does that answer it?
No.
No.
Only because you know your economics much more than I do, so I'm trying to understand what you're talking about.
Okay.
But I think one of the concerns that I've heard expressed in the community is that rents for this, these new shiny retail spaces will be beyond what any of our local small businesses could afford and thereby only appeal to national chain stores or things that aren't serving our local businesses now. And that's my only question. I'm not challenging you. I guess, if it's a 10,000 square foot old building and a 10,000 square foot new building, how would we see the rents different for that small business trying to stay here in town? That's my question.
Well, they're already here, okay? So if they're already here, they're going to continue to pay the same rent that they've been paying, and they're, they're going to be fine, or they own the building outright, and they'll be fine. If, it does not need to be a national chain to invest this kind of money, you just need investors. And there are plenty of investors, and there are plenty of people that own property in this, in this town. As a matter of fact, one of the naysayers of this, is my understanding, I don't know if this is true, went to a bank and got enough money to be able to build something just like what we're talking about, and that's how, that's how it's done. It will be investors, it will not be companies that, that want to build chain stores here. And I'm not sure how else you can address the chain, the chain issue, but, you know, there's, there's plenty of opportunity for the businesses that are here to stay here. If they want to go into a higher return on investment kind of a scenario, well, then they're going to have to get some investors to help them, otherwise they're not going to be able to do it, okay? In other words, the, the revenue that they receive, the rents that they receive for their investment in the building are going to be astronomically more than what they're getting today. That, that's how they'll do it.
Madam Chair, I think, you know, Susan asked a very poignant question. I think Mr. Bourgeois from DeDalias would be, you know, best suited to answer that from his experience across the country as well as internationally of what the effect of transformation within a commercial district with a new code, of how it affects rents, but also there's transformation and modernization of any commercial area with or without a code. So again, lack of investment in a historic commercial area typically drives down rents because there's a lack of financial investment, and then the reverse of that, if someone could say, devoid of any new changes in zoning, if someone starts to invest substantial money in infrastructure being buildings, parking lots, landscaping, that too, traditionally, you'll see an uptick in rents. You know, again, corner of Main and Main is a higher rent than someone who's 1,000 feet down the street from Main and Main. Someone who's in a newer building pays a higher rent than someone is in an older building where the rugs haven't been replaced and the walls haven't been painted, so everyone typically finds their price point. It may not be at the corner of Main and Main, it may be a little bit further away, or, you know, there are people who choose to rent on Main Street, there are people who choose to rent on Robinson. The rents are slightly cheaper on Robinson than, I shouldn't say cheaper, less expensive the further away you get from Main Street, but again, the marketplace seems to find its equilibrium, but again, that would be best placed for Sean to answer.
Thank you. I'm concerned about, for example, the small businesses that are operating right now inside the Wakefield Mall.
Okay.
And I don't know what they pay for rent, I don't know what they can afford to pay for rent, but if the Wakefield Mall were demolished and there was brandy new shiny buildings there, could those businesses afford to stay in our downtown area? And that would be, I think, a concern for our small businesses that, you know, they've been operating in that space for years, and now suddenly they can't stay in our town, and that would be a concern.
There's, there's nothing in the proposal that says that the mall is going away, okay? If the rents go up, the rents are going to go up because they can command that kind of rent because the revenue, the revenues that those stores are getting are going to go up, okay? If, if they, if they don't, then they don't have a viable business any longer, okay? So that's, I guess, the, the only thing I can tell you is, they'll seek, they'll seek the accommodations, they'll seek to rent the kind of a building that, that will afford them. And the other thing that to consider is that, you know, all the, a couple of the retail owners have said, "You don't know anything about retail, Mike. No, I don't, but I know a lot about technology, okay? And shopping is changing, whether they like it or not, or they think about it or not, okay? I go into the Shaw's Market, and there's 20 employees shopping alongside of me for somebody else that's going to come in there and, you know, and stop their car, get their car, get the stuff delivered to the car, or they're going to get it delivered to their house." Now, all of a sudden, the amount of floor space that you need to serve your clientele is going to shrink as well. So there are, there are all kinds of outlets for people to do more with less as well. So, so those are other considerations too. Yep. Sorry, I didn't nail the question right off the bat there.
Mike, wondering if there is anything in your letter that relates to the fact that currently no housing is allowed in the commercial highway district, and this would have a significant and positive impact because there are ways in which the Form-Based Code model could contribute to the economic fabric of, of the area. As you know, we've discussed a lot of the other improvements that would be made from actually creating pedestrian, safe pedestrian access and creation of green space and reduction of the heat island effect. And I would imagine that when Mr. Bourgeois is talking about the economic analysis, he won't necessarily touch upon those things, so it's important that, and again, not having read your letter, that those things continue to find their way forward to the council.
Yes, that's a good point. We do allude to the benefits of having more residential space and, and trying to keep people here after they graduate, those kind of things. So it's mentioned, but it's, it's not a strong point. I'll have to take that into advisement. Thank you.
Other comments? Joe?
I'm just wondering if you, in your letter or your analysis, took into consideration parking. At what point does parking become an issue? I mean, if, can you increase the footprint by 50%, 100%, 200%? At what point does parking become a negative, I guess?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm thinking that things, things are going to have to change. They do allude in the report to the fact that eventually a garage may not have to be provided. We'll have to go vertical rather than horizontal, there's only so much space. But remember, we're connecting the bike paths to make it easier to get there. I know people don't go shopping, you know, but they, but they go for coffee and they do other things there, so the amount of traffic, again, with new business models like delivering things, should reduce the amount of parking that's required, and that needs to happen whether, whether we like it or not, so it's definitely a consideration. There are, as you can talk to Sean also, but there are public mechanisms to fund those kind of things based on the fact that you're going to have significantly more tax revenue to be able to afford to pay those things back, right? So, so that, that could be, it could be accommodated with parking garages and things like that, and also make more walk, walkability, you know, and of course, the residents that live there are not driving there, so that's that kind of thing. Of course, they have to park too, but it's, it's definitely a consideration, but I'd rather see us change our minds a little bit, think a little bit differently, that we probably don't need to drive everywhere to do everything. Maybe there's a few things where we could eliminate the drive. My son and his wife both work, they got three little kids. Every time we go there, they say, "Can you go shopping for us, please? You know, we don't want to take those three kids and bring them to the, you know, Stop and Shop and go through..." They're doing it online now, and it's better for them. "Oh, no, we got that last week, we're not getting that again." "Didn't you see this? It was on sale." And, and they have conversations, and they, they do a joint shopping kind of an exercise, which eliminates automobile traffic and parking.
So I understand all those things that you've acknowledged as far as parking goes, and I, I think that's kind of generally understood. I was just wondering if there was a little more in-depth analysis as far as, based on the distribution of the, where the square footage is now, if we go up an extra story, is that at the point where we need a parking garage? And where would a parking garage be best located so we can be thinking about that now versus building a second story on a building where the parking lot, you realize would be a good place to be?
Yeah, everything, you know, the timing is everything, right? But I, I think that what they were envisioning was that with the mall here and the stores in the front, the parking would be in behind it, between the two, and eventually, a parking garage would be between, between the two. And where the Shaw's parking is, there would be a parking garage there to accommodate the increased parking requirements. That's, that's what they alluded to in the report.
Joe, I, I think your questions are really more directed at Able City East, and it's more of a design question than an economic analysis question. The EDC is pretty much going on the fact that what's been presented is something that's going to work, and they're trying to make an economic analysis based on that. Your question, I think, is more directed towards the Kings at Able City East as to whether or not their design provides enough parking to support it, so maybe that's a better question for the 26th.
Any other questions or comments for Mike? I guess we'll see you on the 26th. I'm really unsure at this point of the format whether folks will be able to speak, whether it's just going to be a presentation to the council. I believe it's a special meeting, but I'm not sure.
I, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe the intention is to allow the consultant to go through where they are with the code, kind of reintroduce the code to the Town Council in its present format, touch upon the financials, how deep they go into that. It depends on how far they can go in the next two weeks since the contract was just authorized last night. And if that takes two hours, there may be minimal time for, EDC's invited, Planning Board's invited, housing collaboratives being invited, but again, depending on timing, I'm not sure or can commit to how much participation there will be from outside boards and commissions or from the public, but the primary focus is allowing the council to have a conversation with the consultant about the Form-Based Code, the basis for the code, how, again, we got here, I think. You know, Mike went through that a little bit, that this has been discussed since early 2000, I think 2005, is kind of our early discussions as... It's kind of our early discussions as a community reinvigorated in 2009, brought back up in the mid 2000s. And then, you know, prior to my arrival five years ago, it was a slightly harder topic when EDC and the town worked with the University of Rhode Island to come up with some conceptual plans. And again, I give a lot of credit to EDC and the people in the town to take it that far because that allowed us as a department to garner support from the council to hire the appropriate professionals to guide us through this process. And again, I want to say that, you know, the code isn't going to mandate anyone do anything with their property unless they choose to change their property. I think there was a question, you know, the Wakefield Mall, it's going to change, only if the owner of the Wakefield Mall wants it to change. Only if a future owner of the Wakefield Mall wants it to change. But if the present footprint and complexity of tenants there, that can remain the same under the code. It's just if there's substantial exterior changes to footprints or other redevelopment of the property outside of the existing footprint is when the code will come into effect. So again, we're working on the final details of that, but again, it's not, if you have an existing gas station and the code gets adopted, there isn't a six-month, 12-month, two-year window when, oh my God, you have to now tear down your building and apply, and comply with the code. You can continue to exist. McDonald's can continue to exist, Burger King, Chipotle's, Mobile Station, all of those businesses can continue to exist. It's only when they're redeveloped or potentially expanded. So again, status quo until there's proposed change.
And Jamie, will there be, either from planning staff or perhaps from the Able City presentation, any reference from, whether it's numbers, somehow making reference to the public support that was well demonstrated during the five-day charrette process?
As I mentioned earlier, we are meeting with representatives of Able City East this Thursday. We have had discussions with them a few weeks back about, you know, taking a moment to say, "How did we get here?" That it wasn't Mike Agnes who, who stood up one day and said, "Let's do this." It wasn't the planning department. You know, I came in as a new director five years ago. I didn't come to this community and say, "I have an idea that I did in another town, and I think South Kingstown should do it." This was already a foothold and had momentum prior to my arrival as the planning director, prior to Brian's arrival as a planner, and even when Jay Parker was with us, prior to his arrival. This has been around for a while. It took us, I think, almost 12 to 24 months to cobble together some funding sources so that we could hire a consultant. But again, this has been in a work, works for a while. And, you know, I recall having a conversation with the Town Council that if this is something the community and the council wants to do, that it's easy to discuss it early on, but when you finally write a regulation and people can read it, pull it apart, evaluate it, that there will be some individuals or businesses or groups of people who potentially may not see this in the best interest of the community. But you have to go back to why you were here and why you started this process, and early on, you thought it was a good idea. And again, ultimately, the, the council will determine whether the code gets adopted or not. But that's, you know, that's months from now. That's months from now.
Thanks, Jamie.
And for anyone in the public, just with regards to the process, there's a draft from July. That draft will need to be revised to a final draft before there are any formal public hearings associated with any contemplation of adoption of the code by the council. There is a very formal process laid out in Rhode Island law for an adoption of a change to any zoning code or map change that the Town Council has to follow, which includes an extensive public process associated with mandatory public hearings and notice to residents. So, thank you, Maria.
Thanks, Jamie. Thank you, Mike. We will see you on the 26th.
All right. Good luck. Thank you.
Let's move on to our next topic, general review of permitting process. Andy, is this you?
Yes, this is me. I gather that there was a desire to go over the permitting process, the comprehensive permits. And so I've put together something there, including a typo, I noticed. It's a review, not a T view. And well as some, a little bit on members' roles and responsibilities.
And can you also send this to us electronically, or have Jamie do so?
Yes, yes.
Great.
It's already been sent to him.
And I think one of the parts of the whole thought process with this was, how do we explain in understandable language to the public how this all works and to the council or any other interested entity within the town?
Okay.
We can answer that later, but...
Well, I mean, it's not simple. Even this simple thing is several, goes to more than two dozen slides. I'm going to try to go through it quickly. I don't think you want to be here till the snow falls tonight.
No. And do you want questions during or after?
Questions during is fine.
Okay.
Although I might put you off and say, "We're going to get to it afterwards."
Sure.
But I know, I've always been, I thought, if I say questions afterwards, everybody mostly forgets the questions. So, um, so questions during is fine. And I'll just come back to your comment and maybe say, certainly in the course of a public hearing, it is not your responsibility to explain to the public how the process, how the law is. How the process works, yes. Who's going to get to talk first? Who's going to present their case? Then who's going to go next? And how much time people are going to be able to have? That's your responsibility to explain. It's not your responsibility to explain the law. It's your responsibility to apply the law, but not to explain it. I understand it's complex. I understand people may come in knowing nothing about it, and that's why we try to have a lot of resources available for them. But that's not something that you should be doing, particularly in the midst of any particular application, trying to explain to people that. I know there's a tendency to try to do that and try to defend, you know, why we're doing it, but it's not, and it generally only makes it worse. You should apply the law and, you know, if there are issues, there are other forums, including, you know, as far as formos, there are workshops with the council, there are workshops here, there are other forums to, to explain it, rather than while you're in the midst of a hearing. So let's talk about comp plans, comprehensive permits, rather, comp permits. Remember, this goes back to 1991, was when this was first adopted in Rhode Island. And it was modeled after the Massachusetts statute. And the Massachusetts statute, let remind you, the name, the short name of the Massachusetts statute was the Anti-Snob Zoning Act. That's, that's where this came from. The situation was worse in Massachusetts because they had a lot more, their whole western part of the state, they had large acre zoning, lot of communities that, you know, had nothing but two-acre lots for single-family homes and nothing else. But that's where it came from, and that's where it was applied in Rhode Island. And the original idea was to increase housing production and to speed it up. And there were a couple of key elements of that, one of which was provide one-stop shopping. Started with the zoning board, then became flexible, either zoning or planning boards. Now it's the planning board. But the idea that a developer would go one-stop shopping for their permits, for all relief necessary. Also deadlines, which were a new thing then in 1991. In fact, they really didn't come in till 92 with the Development Review Act of deadlines. If you don't act by such and such a date, then it's going to be automatically approved. So things couldn't just be continued and continued and continued as opposed to being voted on to approve or deny. And then there was a separate appeal process with the State Housing Appeals Board. And that was two things. First of all, it was definitely a slanted board. It was meant to be by statute. It was, its goal was to encourage housing production. It did have municipal representatives, but it was slanted towards the housing thing. It was also meant to be much faster. Instead of the years, things would be taken, the courts, the shab was meant to move much faster. I'm not going to give you the whole history of all the ups and downs in the last 30 years. We'll just jump to basically 2023 and 2024 and what's, what's new now, where we are. But, but that's where we started. I mean, the key things now, it is the planning board, the State Housing Appeals Board has been eliminated. A special land use calendar has been created with Judge Lanfair, who is currently the land use judge, to keep things moving quickly. And the master plan stage for comprehensive permits has been eliminated or basically made optional. It's up to the developer if they want to have master plan or not. Those are the, the key differences, and then there's a lot of the other stuff now. The other big key difference is the density bonuses. Up until relatively recently, there were no numbers. Developer was accredited to a density bonus, but there was nothing. Someone could come in with a property that is otherwise zoned for two units and could ask for 20, 200, 2,000, whatever they could fit. There was no limit to it. Now there are density bonuses, and we'll get to them, that they differ based on what the percentage is of affordable units, and they also differ based on the infrastructure available. And they're not at all appropriate for all of Rhode Island. They're too small for places like Cranston and too big for places like Charleston. But at least there's something there in the law. So that's kind of the, that's the 50,000-foot view. So, um, the key thing that has been the same all along here, the special review, in order to qualify for a comprehensive permit, at least 25% of it must be what people commonly call affordable housing, what is technically called low and moderate income housing. There's special standards for approval or denial that force the board to review the project through the lens of affordable housing. It's basically a balancing test between the need for housing and the other elements. All the old-fashioned zoning stuff about hardship and stuff goes by the wayside. So, let's take a look. Next page, please. Who's, okay. The 2025 amendments. They're confusing because there are two sections, one that went into effect upon January 1st, July 1st, rather, and then another section that went into effect January 1st. But we'll try to take it separately. The applications are subject to the law in effect when a substantially complete application is filed. And from hearing Judge Lanfair speak, it appears that what he's looking for is a certificate of completeness. That's going to be the date when a project is issued their certificate of completeness. That's pretty much certifying that their application is substantially complete, and that's the period of time that the law is applied. So if it's, you know, if it's December 30th of '25, it's one standard. If it's January 2nd of '26, it's a different one. Yes?
Going back to density bonus for a second. Is there any distinction in either law or in practice that you've seen as far as a multi-unit building with that many apartments or the subdivision of the land into that many lots?
No. There, I mean, I'm, I'm going to get to the density bonus, but that's a separate question. There's no distinction between lots or units. It doesn't matter, it, it, the, the density is the number of units, whether they're all piled into one four-story building or whether they're spread out in little separate ranch houses. The, the density as far as governed by this is per unit.
And the reason why I say or in practice, because if it was in a single building, units, and then it would potentially violate, you know, the zoning in that area versus single family?
No, it doesn't matter. Doesn't matter whether it violates the zoning. Effectively, it's a variance. It's a variance through the process, it's a use variance, doesn't matter. Makes no difference. The idea of lot and lot size go by the wayside. It's basically a density calculation of units per area of, of land, in this case, units per acre, what they're looking for, and that's, doesn't matter how it's laid out.
Andy, have you seen any kind of difficulties or way of better managing the completion? So if someone is certified complete and then it doesn't get to the planning board for two months and it gives them much less time to review a project? Have you seen any way in which communities have been able to better handle that issue?
Um, no. I mean, I think it's important that they, they, the idea is that they're to get priority. If, if there's a comprehensive permit pending, it should move to the top of the line ahead of Joe Schmo, who's got a regular subdivision because of, I mean, that's the idea. So, I mean, you have to balance everything. Oh, we're almost done with this one, we want to get this fixed. But, but no, there, there isn't that consideration, and there never has been. I remember, pretty sure it was in South Kingstown, Bill Landry filed an application of the day before Thanksgiving, and under the old law, they have 45 days. We had to have the first hearing like on Chris, before Christmas Eve in order to meet the time limit. So it is what it is. That's what the law is. So, anyway, coming back to this, the other thing we note here is, pre-application doesn't confer any vested rights. That's the same across everything. So that's always the goal, to get people to come in for pre-application and, you know, get to talk to them early. And remember, it's better not to require too much information at pre-application, or instead, you're going to get nothing. You're going to, you're going to get a plan that's already baked, and there isn't any willingness to change a plan, where they've already spent a lot of money on engineering and architects and stuff like that. So don't try to force people to give you too much at pre-application because it's going to rebound against you. Okay. So talking about the changes effective July 1, master plan was restored as an option for the developers. In the previous bill, it had been eliminated completely the previous year. Now it's back, but it's an option for the developers to elect, not the town. There's, required findings have been very much revised, and we'll talk about that. They used to be what we called asynchronous findings, one set for approval, one set for denial. Now there's one set of required findings. There's still a little bit fuzzy or wonky, depending on your terminology, but, but there's one set of findings there. And one of the key things here, if the planning board finds that the project is not consistent with local needs, it must also find that the municipality has made significant progress in implementing its affordable housing plan. And we're going to talk about that more before you jump into questions. Other big changes, next page, please. Changes to the standard of whether the LMI units are compatible in scale to the market-rate units. Now there's actually a number there. Instead of just a subjective thing, basically, it's this, the, the 25%, basically, it's 75%. The affordable units have to be at least 75% of the, of the, of the market-rate units. This is kind of worked backwards on the 25% the way they're calling it, but that's the answer. She'll not be less than 25%. So, yep.
Is there any requirement? Is there any requirement that the occupants of the affordable units have access to the same
Is there any requirement that the occupants of the affordable units have access to the same amenities as other tenants?
No, not in the law.
Okay.
I mean, there's just the general language. There's the general language that they're supposed to be integrated into the development, which I would think for the most part would mean that they would be entitled to the same. How can you integrate them into the development if they're not having access to the same amenities? So anyway, I'm, I'm sorry, I did read that wrong. It should be, basically, they could be only twenty-five percent. The affordable units can be as small as twenty-five percent of the market rate units. So, shall not be less than. Yeah, twenty-five percent. That's what it says. Anyway. The other question about similar architectural styles, they talk a little bit more about similar roof lines, roof, roof lines, window patterns, materials and colors. So just defining it a little more as opposed to just similar architectural style. Next page. Exception to the requirement that they be integrated for age-restricted units. So basically, if you have affordable units that are age-restricted, then you're not subject to these requirements that they be designed the same place. It, it says are designed to meet the physical or social needs of older persons or necessary to provide housing opportunities for older persons. So that's kind of wishy-washy, but it seems to me to say, okay, we can put all the affordable units in one four-story building and have a lot of duplexes or townhouses for our market rate. That's what it seems to say.
Just wondering if you have, due to this specific change, have you seen any success in this type of age-restricted developments that end up with a ninety-nine-year affordability? In other communities that you've worked?
Well, the ninety-nine year stuff, I have seen the ninety-nine year affordability in various settings, not just with age restriction. But I mean, the, the one most common church community housing corporation, which operates in Newport County, has always had ninety-nine year restrictions on their stuff.
I assume when you, I assume when you say age-restricted, what we're talking about is age-restricted by deed. It's not good enough for the developer to just say, I'm going to limit these to fifty-five plus. Is that correct?
I'm not so sure it's a deed or, but it's a restriction, yes. And it ties into the fact of, in order to make, in order to restrict it at all, there are certain standards that they have to meet to comply with the Fair Housing Act and the Fair Housing Amendments. And that's one of them, that, that basic element of, you know, they can't pick a number less than fifty-five as their, their minimum number. And, and the law is, you know, only one person in each unit has to meet that fifty-five and so forth. And they have to have amenities. They have to have all of that for the affordable.
So if it's not age-restricted by deed, we'd be well advised to make it a condition of approval?
Yes.
I have a question, too. Going back to that twenty-five percent statement. So we've always sort of operated under the similar in size and scale. So with this change, a developer can build a whole bunch of two thousand square foot homes and then put in some five hundred square foot cottages and call that. I think the whole idea was that they wouldn't be stigmatized for looking different and being able to be picked out in a crowd. And certainly, a little tiny cottage mixed into really big houses is pretty easy to see who's living where. Is that, is it truly twenty-five percent that, that's permitted?
I think so. I, I, but I, I.
I read it, I read it to be, they were proposing market rate at two thousand square feet, that they can't go below fifteen hundred square feet.
I, I think.
For an affordable. I don't think it's two thousand and five hundred.
That's what I think, and that's why I said that to begin with, although, and I'm just looking at this here and just wondering. But, but my understanding was that way, too, that the, that it was the seventy-five percent, and that's just the, I, I don't have the rest of the sentence here, but we'll check that, but I think it is supposed to be.
Yeah, I think it's interpreted, it can't be less than twenty-five percent. So if it's a thousand, it can't be less than seven fifty. If it's two thousand.
The difference is the twenty percent.
The other did not make sense to me at all.
So, okay. So then we have the new stuff that's just brand newly effective from January one of this year. So I don't know that we've got any, no, but I don't think anybody's got that because we're not hearing any cases yet that nobody's been certified complete in, in, since January first that's going to be applying this stuff. But, anyway. One of the elements here is really not affecting us, not affecting this town, but clarifies how comprehensive permits are reviewed in municipalities that have met the ten percent. Previously, if you hit ten percent, that was it. Bing, you rang the bell, you were done. The new law now provides that even those municipalities are supposed to accept comp permit applications, which they didn't have to do, and provide density bonuses, although those are unspecified. The specific minimum density bonuses are applicable to only those who have not achieved the ten percent. The other thing, too, it's not so much mentioned here, but just to remember in the context of this, there's now adding in the section eight units are now counted in your ten percent, which is going to mean much more variability in the number, if you think about it. Because, you know, you were putting units in and they were locked for thirty years and, you know, and hopefully you had a nice upward curve. But you got to jump with the section eight, but the section eight can also jump down if they, if they're less in the future. People can move around with the vouchers and for whatever reason. So your numbers can change much more from year to year, not just going up with, with that process. The other thing to think about is the units that were approved in the nineteen nineties with thirty-year limits. Now, some places have been, a lot of places and, and like the monitoring agents have been automatically renewing every time when the house turns over, they renew for another thirty years each time. But that's not what the law is, and if it hits someone who's got a big rental unit and therefore has the money to do it, then, then we're going to see, you know, perhaps a lot of units suddenly go back to becoming market rate as that thirty. So your number may go down, not just up. So. Let's talk about, next slide. We've also had the elimination of the ability to limit the application from for-profit developers. Currently, you can do it if you're meeting local housing needs, but now it's only if you've achieved the ten percent. So you don't have that extra hammer against for-profit developers. And the applic, definition of consistent with local needs has been making it all municipalities, not just the ten percent goal has been achieved. That, again, doesn't necessarily apply for us, but other, other communities, or when we get to ten percent, you know, there might be a finding that ten percent is not consistent with local needs. You need more than ten percent.
Andy, can you give us an example of not consistent with local needs? I mean, since everybody needs housing, what would be an example?
I will do that when we get to the findings, okay?
And will you also then explain to us if there is a significant progress in implementing the affordable housing plan, what?
No, because we can't find a definition for that. It's been gone, so there isn't a definition for significant progress. But we'll talk about some things that have been looked at in the past and so forth. So the answer is, I will give you an unsatisfactory answer when we get to that. So let's talk about some of the procedures itself. We talked about the twenty-five percent below a moderate income housing. That is still a hard and fast requirement. The municipal government subsidies, which you're supposed to provide, do include adjustments and zoning incentives. And that's, as it says, to offset the differential costs of the lower moderate income housing units in a development under this chapter. And then they talk about the minimum zoning incentives, which we're going to get to in a moment. I just want to say something, just as a historical thing, and, and it's part of the problem we're facing now. It used to be, before COVID, it used to be, if, in Rhode Island, anyway, if you could take the land out of the equation, you could generally build a house that was affordable to low and moderate income. The building cost could be done. It had to be built cheaply, couldn't be necessarily that big. You know, Formica countertops, not granite. But you could do it. The per foot construction costs and the requirements, you know, what was affordable then was more like two fifty to three hundred, you know, would be affordable. And you could do it if, so if you took the land out of the equation and we had all these, you know, density bonuses, so essentially they're getting free land for the extra units, it worked. The problem we have now is just the construction costs. Even without land, you can't build a house that will be affordable, even if the land is, is zero. There's got to be extra profit from additional units of market rate to subsidize the cost of building the affordable ones. That's, that's just what I see as a real estate attorney and, and the facts of the situation. And I think that's what's also behind this in the law. It's not enough to just give the developer the free land for the extra units. You know, before, okay, we give you, and if you remember our inclusionary zoning stuff, you know, okay, you're going to have ten, we'll give you twelve units so that you get the land for those extra two units for free and those two units become affordable. Now those two units aren't even affordable with the free land. So I need, you know, sixteen, twenty units to be able to make those two affordable units. I need the extra profit from those units to be able to do it. That's, I think, part of just the reality that's behind the situation at the moment.
Are you seeing in other communities a considerable amount of five-lot subdivisions being built so that?
Yes, four lots. Five lot, they get, they trigger a lot of the time.
I don't think for us.
So, well, depending, I'm seeing a lot of stuff before built, yes, people under the, trying to build under the threshold. They don't want the affordable. But, but it is, it is hard to do. I mean, in Barrington, there's a development there where the town bought land from a closed, from the church, from a closed monastery, is having variety of stuff. And, and the only way to do it, it was an RFP, and the only way to get a developer to do age-restricted housing and including affordable housing is the land is being sold for a dollar. Plus, they're getting the other non-affordable units to make up the difference, and the town's paying for the infrastructure for the affordable units. I mean, that's, that's what's having to be done to, to create it. If you're doing it on a smaller scale, unless the other thing is to have, you know, a lot more units and that extra profit covers it. So. Coming back to this page here, actually, we're on the next page. Definitions, adjustments, just, you know, you're, 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 you can't say it doesn't conform with local zoning, because that's your job to give them an adjustment so that it will, it doesn't matter whether it conforms to local zoning or not. And then the subsidy we talked about, you know, such assistance shall include a combination of, but is not limited to, direct financial support, abatement of taxes, waiver of fees and charges, and approval of density bonuses and/or internal subsidies, zoning incentives and adjustments as defined in this section, and any combination of forms of assistance.
Andy, just for a second, can you take one step back? And again, I think you made a pertinent statement. Cannot say that it does not conform to zoning, which I think the majority of the planning board members understand. But the difficulty sitting in the role that you play as a planning board member is when the public's present and an application is live and like, you know, I'm in an R forty zone. How can they do six units an acre? How are they allowed to do this? This isn't consistent with character, consistent with comprehensive community plan, consistent with zoning. Can you just spend a minute on public perception and potentially how to handle that?
Well, yes and no. Yes, it's, it, it's a problem. And, and the how to handle it, I don't know the answer to that, except as I, I think that it's not the role of the planning board to handle that and try to explain it to people. It's our, it's our role. It's the solicitor giving introductory remarks or the planner or something like that, but not you as the decision makers to get into any kind of dialogue, which is what is happening there. But, and the other way to do it, I guess, is to make clear as you're working your way through the standards. But, but the answer is clear that, you know, the general assembly, the, the, the general assembly has changed the landscape figuratively and literally. They are changing the landscape. And whether the, you know, the people who, who bought with the expectation, oh, there'll only be forty thousand square foot lots next to me with one house on them or not, that's just the fact that the general assembly is changing. You don't own your zoning. And the town could rezone. And in this case, it's not the town, it's effectively the state by putting this in. And they've, you know, they make determinations as to what's best for the general public. Whether it be, you know, I may not want to lose ten feet of my front yard, but if they decide that the highway needs to be widened for safety and traffic benefits, they can condemn it, and as long as they pay me for it, they can do it. I mean, those are things that you may not want that change, but those are our government decisions. And as I said, with the zoning thing, I mean, unless, unless they're basically taking pretty much a hundred, ninety-nine percent of the value of a property, that's not a taking. So I, I, I don't think, like I said, I don't think you should be doing it, and, and it's, it's not going to really work because you're going to tell the people that, but they're not going to, they're emotionally charged. They're not going to listen to you and say, oh, yeah, you're right. I, I, you're right. It's more important. This is a better goal because nobody wants it next to me. You know, this is really a good goal for the town of South Kingstown. We should have more housing opportunities for more people, but not next door to me. And whether they say that explicitly or not, it's there, and nothing you say is going to change their mind. So my concern is here that you don't make a decision based on your emotions or the emotions of the audience in front of you, which is then going to negatively affect the entire town if we lose a court case because we'll end up paying attorneys fees and damages possibly. And that's going to come out of everybody's pockets, all the taxpayers of the town. So, so my, my job is to kind of encourage you and to make sure that the decision is based on the facts as applied to the law, the way it is now, not the way we would like to see the law. I'll give you a personal example. When I was in law school, there was a professor who was also a federal judge, who was a co-author of a five-volume treatise on evidence. But when I talked to the people taking the class, it was always, oh, he teaches it the way he believes evidence should be. I took the course instead with the guy who had been a former New York City prosecutor and taught evidence the way it actually happens in the field and in the court. So that's what I want you to do. I want you to apply, you, you've got to apply the law here, not the way you think it should be, but the way it is. And the only thing I can say is to the people who complain to you and, you know, stop you in the shopping center for how could you do this? You know, then your answer is. you in the shopping center for how could you do this, you know, then your answer is, I'm sorry, we're just applying the law as written by your state legislators. Go talk to your state legislator if you want to change. That's, that's my form response for you to be able to give when faced with that.
Andy, can you, this second paragraph, can you explain if there is a inconsistency in the language where it says, "Such assistance shall include a combination of, but is not limited to, direct financial support, abatement of taxes, waiver of fees and charges, and approval of density bonuses," and/or, and then all the other stuff? Is that a little bit contradictory, or is it...
Yeah, it's typical legislative drafting. I mean, the idea is...
That's what I thought.
It, it should be, it should be more than one, and here's a batch of different things that you can combine, and by the way, if you think of something else you could combine it with, you could do that too.
So, Andy, just to go back to your comment, yeah, I get that we have to accept the additional density. So if it's five additional units out of one acre, we have to accept the six, six units. But are we understanding to maybe require some design details or other mechanisms to make it look with the surrounding area? So can we say, okay, you get the six units, but we want this to look like a large single-family house, or we want this to look like two large, we want the parking lot in the back, we want additional landscaping, or is the design standard pretty much, we don't get designs?
I think it's a balancing test as part of the rest of it. You can do it to the extent that you're not making it so expensive, making it expensive as to be feasible. I mean, so here's a good example. We want the parking to be in back instead of in front. That doesn't cost, assuming there's not ledge or wetlands or something, doesn't cost any more money to put the parking over here versus over here. We want you to, you know, put a landscape buffer 10 feet wide over 300 feet of property thing that we don't otherwise require for other people, for other residential use? No, that's, that's, that's something that you can't do. You, you can't basically determine that aspect of it. The same thing, you know, if you want, you know, so more, more separate, smaller buildings are going to be more expensive to construct than fewer larger buildings. So to the extent that you might try to require fewer larger buildings, maybe you'd be successful. To the extent you say, you know, oh, small, smaller buildings, no, because that's going to drastically increase the expense. All right, let's move on, so we're not here. The actual density mandatory minimums that we talked about. So basically, connected to public water sewer, not connected to either public water sewer or both, and then depending on whether they're 25% LMI, which is the minimum, 50% LMI, 100% LMI, they can get denser and denser as you go along. And here's the thing to remember, when I first read this, I thought these were the densities, but no, these are the bonuses to whatever is the underlying density. So if your underlying density is, let's say, two units per acre, and you've got 25 LMI, and you're connected to public water and sewer there, then it's seven units is the actual density that they can apply for. And that you can't, you can't restrict them to less than that. Now, they can ask for more, you can grant more, but this is the minimum. It's also, in my mind, flawed because of, they lump, you know, okay, connected to both utilities, that's great, that's a number, then what if they're only one utility? They're lumped into the other thing of no utilities or one, you know, to me, it shouldn't be the same. It should be one, you know, water and sewer, because that's a problem, fitting it both on one lot. It shouldn't be the same, but again, at least it's a number to start with, which we never had before. So it's a number the developer starts with, but it's a number that you have and say, okay, at least we can draw the line at something. So, then there are limits on what you can do, other limits, I think you're probably aware of these anyway, but parking, you can't require more than one off-street parking space per dwelling unit that has up to two bedrooms. And so if it's a two-bedroom unit, they, all they have to have is one parking space. You can also not limit the number of bedrooms to anything less than three bedrooms per dwelling unit for single-family dwelling units. So you can't just say you have to build these little two-bedroom units, two-bedroom townhouses, which, you know, okay, that'll be great, we won't have any children, just elderly or not. You can't require it. The developer can come in with it, but you can't have that requirement. And you can't use floor area requirements. Basically, I think what they mean is floor area ratio. For some reason, I don't think the general assembly understands what floor area ratio is, so they've tended to outlaw it. That's just my aside. And then basically, you can't put any kind of limit or moratorium on the development of these. So let's go to the specific sections pre-application. You can require, an municipality may require a project to come in under the pre-application. And they talk about that could be with a local review board, the technical review committee, or the administrative officer. And as you see, in advance of a pre-application conference, the applicant shall be required to submit only a short description of the project in writing, including the number of units, types, housing, density analysis, preliminary list of adjustments needed, as well as a location and conceptual site plan. The purpose of the pre-application conference shall be to review a concept plan of the proposed development and to elicit feedback from the reviewing person or board. And then there's times in which to do it. And pre-app can be required only where the applicant has not elected the master plan. So if they've elected master plan, then you can't require a pre-app. Now, as a practical matter, an applicant who require, elects master plan will probably elect for the pre-app too, but you can't require it. Optional master plan, they may, they may elect it to be heard on this thing, and they make it very clear, their submission requirements, certificate of completeness, the timelines, and then the other big thing about that is, if you will go to the next page, the findings for the master plan. They're really clear about that the failure to provide information which is required later at preliminary plan review shall not form a basis of denial. And this is something that planning boards have been dealing with for all sorts of developments for the last 30 years, the question of how much can you require at master plan? And this is the general assembly saying, hey, specifically for this one, you just, anything that says that you're required at preliminary, which effectively is the rest of the stuff since the opt, plan, opt, master plan is optional. So basically, you can't deny a master plan simply because they didn't give you information that you asked for or wanted. You can, you'd have to make the findings based on what they've given you, and if it's something that it's unknown because they haven't. Now, you know, I think it can be worded where, if you're approving it, you have a long list of the subject things that are to be required, that you've asked for, that they didn't give you, but the, the point is not to be able to deny it just because, I mean, like a traffic study. Yeah, maybe you damn well want a traffic study at master plan, but they don't have to give it to you. And you can't deny it because they wouldn't give it to you.
Andy, sometimes in the past, we have at master plan made, it's not really a disclaimer, but made reference to the fact that certain items that may be particular to a site may result in changes to layout or, you know, whatever at preliminary, and we would put that into a decision. Is that still allowed?
I think so. Assuming it's a decision to approve master plan, yes.
Yes.
I'm just saying, this basically is talking about denying it, but yes.
Yep.
You know, you can certainly say, you know, this is, assuming that the preliminary determination of wetland bears out when the actual wetland boundaries are flagged.
Yep.
And things like that.
Andy, can I ask you a question also? I realize if they need their wetland permits, they'll need their wetland permits for final. But a traffic study, requiring a traffic study, how does that compare to rely, to demanding a satisfactory traffic study? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, what if it's a horrible traffic study? Is that, I mean, yes, they provided us one, but it's one that would be unacceptable if, like, we've never denied a project because of a really bad traffic study, but I suppose there are such things as really bad traffic studies. And if the traffic study, sure, they provided one, but it was a really bad one, is there some going back on that approval? Or is it just, any traffic study as long as it satisfies that checkoff box? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, as an example, say a traffic study adjacent to a large university was done during spring break rather than at another time of year.
Right. So I think the answer is, for a comprehensive permit, you again can't deny it because the traffic study isn't required. They don't have to give you any traffic study for master plan. So you would approve it, but you would put that in as a condition that the traffic study, you know, when they come back for preliminary, the traffic study should include, you know, studies done during times when the university is in session, is in regular, normal session, as well, you know, it should, it should include at least one time when the university is a normal session, and it should also include at least one summer, summer day, you know, summer good weather day when beach traffic is in a normal condition. But again, that's going to be a condition of approval, not denial.
So we have to actually articulate the standards of the traffic study that we want to have?
Yeah, you have to, you have to articulate why it's horrible and what they would have to do to correct it.
Sorry, so, so requesting it, or sorry, demanding a traffic study doesn't equate to demanding a acceptable traffic study? So if their traffic study shows that the intersection is going to go from an A+ to an F-, what would we have needed to articulate for that to be the poison pill for a project?
No, for something like that, it wouldn't have. I mean, there, when you talk about a horrible traffic study, what I'm thinking about is one that's poorly done. If a, if it's a properly done traffic study that just shows a bad outcome, then that's, that's, that's different. If it shows the intersection going to an F, you know, that is considered grounds, or if it shows safety issues with site sopping, that is considered ground, that's not a horrible traffic study. That's just a traffic study that shows that it's not appropriate. I mean, as a practical matter, you're never going to get that, because they're never going to submit that to you, even if they get it. So what I'm, what I'm more thinking of is what we also say. Like you said, they do a project up in, in Kingston, and they do it when the university's on spring break. That's the sort of thing that you're going to get. Or they do something down by the shore, and they do it in, you know, the middle of winter. Those are the things that they're, they're just not really doing a comprehensive study, or they're missing, they've only done, you know, one interest, the nearest intersection, and ignored where the real choke point is, three blocks over, something like that.
And just, Susan, if I can for a moment, in most instances, and you haven't seen this in your tenure on the planning board, that if you're going from a level of service B to a level of service of F, in most instances, the developer will be proposing intersection improvements to get you to go from a B to a C, or a B to a D. But in most instances, if a developer is going from an A or B to an F, either the state is going to mandate improvements to an intersection, addition of a lane, turning lane, widening, signalization changes, that's what you'll see. But again, level of service, you know, B to D doesn't mean there's a safety issue, there just potentially means there's a delay.
So I understand that a DEM permit is a black and white, it's a yes or no. Traffic is a little more nuanced.
Right. That's the other reason why, you know, at preliminary, you can have peer review, you can have your, the town zone traffic engineer review it. And that's something on the preliminary that you can consider.
Have you seen traffic studies that were so abysmal that it actually turned the tide on a big project? Like, is that, like, sites, that would be sightlines? Or just volume of cars? Like, I guess I don't understand when, when the trigger is.
My experience is, is volume of cars can typically be handled with intersection improvements. I've been involved in projects where there's a two-lane arterial, and it ends up being a five-lane arterial, and they have to carry that out through three or four intersection improvements. So you're talking about multimillion dollars of worth of improvement, because they're doing a new light in front of their development, then they have to go to the on and off ramp, do new lights, new turning lanes, then they're going on to a northbound, southbound ramp, they're making more turning lanes, more light signalization improvements. And I had one project that literally went another mile and a half down the road and made further intersection improvements of two state routes. And that was a coordination between the developer and the state. That was the deal with level of service. I've also been in other projects where sightlines were minimal at best. In one instance, town staff was stating that they were not acceptable, so the developer went back, re-engineered, and slid a road, you know, that was in the center of a 50-foot right, right away, and moved it 15 feet to the edge of the right away, and changed the alignment of the road, and chased it back, you know, 1,000 feet right and left to improve sightlines. And once they did that at their expense, you know, it was only on paper, but ultimately, if the projects are proved and built, it's their expense to make those improvements, but when those improvements are made, their sightlines improved.
Susan probably remembers when we had the same traffic engineer give two different levels of service for projects that were 1,000 feet away from one another on the same road. So...
Yep. Okay, let's keep moving though.
Oh, before we go to the next page, and I, and I think Liz has a question. On section E, it says, "Including but not limited to opinions of experts." How can we make a peer review happen at preliminary when we may not have enough information at master plan to know that one is necessary, and then with such a short timeframe, might make it impossible? Think about something that's right along the coast that you really need a hydrologist to give input, which is a very special art.
Well, I mean, one thing you can, I mean, I think one thing, don't forget, you might not even have a master plan. Maybe they're just coming in on preliminary plan. So I, and, and then, you know, they're required stuff for final, so you may have to make it a condition of final. And I think the best thing to do is, you know, be as specific as possible with it. But that's what you might have to do, realizing that you're not going to see it at final. It's going to be staff at final, but it still could be a condition of final. Okay, so the things that they need, they need a letter of eligibility. That hasn't really changed much there. They need the letter by the applicant, proposed timetable, and then the key thing here, those items required by local regulations, with the exception of evidence of state and federal permits. So again, the state, federal permits, the wetlands, the DEM, the CRMC stuff, they don't have to have at preliminary. And I think the answer is, you're probably going to find, most people are probably going to have them anyway, because... to have them anyway, because they're simply not going to go, they want to get the financing, they want to do it. I think, even though they're not required, I think you will be finding most people having most of those at preliminary, or at least some of them at preliminary. Again, for example, they might have preliminary determination of wetland edges, they might have preliminary jurisdiction determination letters from CRMC, and things like that. They're likely to at least have something there on those things, but they don't have to. Um, and then, notwithstanding the requirements above, you can request additional reasonable documentation, um, and you can require evidence of necess- of application for the permits. You can require, request advice from other local boards and officials. I mean, you're in a good position, you're in a little bit of a good position here with South Kingston. I mean, you've got a good town engineering staff, so you don't have to go try to get someone outside and whatnot. Um, you know, it might make sense to think about having a, you know, you know, bid it out to have a traffic engineer on call that you can reach if it becomes a problem, you know, that you've got someone there who's, who's your traffic engineer, um, you know, outside traffic engineer, but someone who's, you know, readily responsible at an agreed-upon rate to review that stuff. Okay, finding number one. Whether the proposed development is consistent with local needs as identified in the community's affordable housing plan, and/or has satisfactorily addressed the issues where there may be inconsistencies. And if the local board finds that the proposed development is inconsistent with the community's affordable housing plan, it must also find that the municipality has made significant progress in implementing its housing plan. So, we've got like, two parts here. And, as I said, significant progress hasn't really been defined. There's a problem also even in just the numbers, because the numbers lag, you know, they're only putting together the housing book once a year. And I don't know how Judge Landfair is going to treat it, but the State Housing Appeals Board used to look at the numbers when the comprehensive permit application was filed, even when you were two years later and you were arguing before them, and it's like, look at all these things, we've gone from 3% to 6% in the last two years. It's like, nope, we're looking at it, when they filed, you were still at 3%, and had been at 3% for the previous five years, that's what we're looking at. Now, I don't know. Judge Landfair seems to indicate more sympathy with local boards, um, so, you know, he may be willing, also, you know, to the extent that at least they're getting regular numbers out, and particularly since they're changing with Section 11, you know, he may, Section 8, rather, he may be willing to look at at least much more, you know, recent numbers, rather than looking at that number as certificate of appropriateness. He might be willing to look at that number, at least at the date of the decision of the board. Will he look at it as of the time that it comes to him in court? Probably not, but at least hopefully for the decision of the board. And, um, you know, this consistent with local needs is, is a difficult question as well, or satisfactorily, you know, address the inconsistencies. And that's basically this, this balancing test, you know? And I just want to say that community character is not a local need. It's just not. Um, you know, safety of the residents, things like that, safety of people driving on traffic, things like that are local needs. Aquifers, issues of, you know, environment, uh, environmental issues that are not covered by DEM and CRMC, which are very little, probably aquifers are about the only one now, left, but, um, those, those are local needs. But community character is not a local need, so.
Andy, just a quick question on significant progress implementation. I know some planners have discussed the fact that, hey, we just adopted a new housing plan, and we have a plan moving forward.
Yep.
Is it, whether it's your opinion or insight, I think I read this to be the creation of an actual occupiable unit that a CO has been issued, not a plan that says, in the next five years, I intend to build something.
I think so, because, I mean, the language that they struck out, the old language that they had there briefly for a year, was actually, you know, that 20% of the building permits that were issued in the calendar year had to be affordable. They had that, you know, they had a hard number there of that. So, yes, and that ties to Shab 2 of what have you done for us lately question. I think they're looking for units. They're not looking for just, have you, have you, have you adopted a good plan, it's the progress in implementing the plan that they're looking for.
So, um, if a community has, say in the last year, approved 1,000 units, does that count for anything, if they have not yet been built?
I think it will. I think it will count for something with the judge. I don't know how much it will count, but I think it will. I, I think, I think it will, and, um, I mean, there's no denying that these, there are some subj- there's, these are subjective elements in here, so, yes.
Not to be arrogant, but how do we know that community character and consistency of design is not a local need? Has this been tested? Has this been brought up?
Yes, the courts have not been favorable to design elements, as far as it. That's not an answer, whether it, and, and it's not just limited to, to affordable housing. If you look at the case law from the Federal Telecommunications Act and cell towers, the federal courts that have ruled on that have talked about that as well. That community character is generally not something that you can rely on for land use decision, other than a designated historic district. If you have an absolute, if you have a designated historic district, you have a different game plan, completely. But if you, other than that, um,
So who protects the community character? Or nobody?
Yeah, it's not something to be protected. The, the answer, the answer of, I mean, the, the only way to protect the community character is to move in and shut the door behind you, and not let anybody in, and not have anybody, any change. That's how we've protected our character, and, and that is not lawful. There is going to be change. The community's going to develop, and the character of the community is going to change over time. Now, there's a lot of small things that you do to try to protect, you know, to try to maintain elements of it, um, ranging from outright, you know, buying development rights, buying the land, um, but buying development rights from the turf farms to protect them from development, things like that.
I also think putting design elements into your form-based code is really laying the groundwork to make that kind of argument in the future. But based on the kinds of zoning laws, et cetera, that we have now, it's just not going to rise to the level of proof.
I mean, in order to do it here, you're going to have to be a lot less flexible in your design things. That's, that's really the point. Your things are so flexible, and you spend such time discussing it, and I mean, and I think a good example was the recent one on Main Street. I mean, if that doesn't fit in, if you, if you, if you have to go through all that, then, then you don't have effective guidelines. It, it really is only going to work in some place like Nantucket, that says, okay, everything you build is going to be natural cedar shingles. If you're going to have stuff like that, that you can apply uniformly to affordable and non-affordable and stuff like that, then you have more of a chance of that. And also having a rationale for it, too. They have it, you know, it pretty much all developed under this style, they have a rationale to do it, they have a historic district. But you can't have both the fuzzy guidelines that you, you know, yeah, this needs a little here, this needs a little here, this needs that, and consider those to be enforceable in any situation, whether it be comp permit or non-comp permit. So, I, I think, maybe you're right about form-based code, but the other way to do it, if you really, if you, if you want it, you're going to have to be a lot, a lot less flexible in your guidelines, and then your community is going to be looking a lot more homogeneous, which actually is not historically accurate to your character, anyway. So, all right, I, I need to move on, or we're going to be here all night. Let me, let me move on a little bit.
Yeah, can I ask a quick one on this, Andy?
How can I let you ask it, not Susan?
And we still have 20 minutes before we hit that two-hour mark, so we're good.
Okay, Susan, go, Susan first.
I'll look like, I trumped Brian. Um, so this whole Tower Hill Road neighborhood thing that we've been gnashing our teeth over for two years, can someone roll into this and do a comp permit, and build a big building full of apartments, and just totally throw this out the window with the, with the, with that?
Possibly. They could do that right now. They could certainly do it right now, and even after you adopted it, they might, I don't know. Okay, no, Brian, sorry.
So, consistency with the community's affordable housing plan, which in our case is the housing element of our comprehensive plan.
Yep.
We all know how, um, comprehensive plans are written, a lot of big vague language. What happens when the applicant can come in and demonstrate that its project is consistent with these provisions over here, but people in opposition to the project can come in and say that it's inconsistent with another provision?
So you mean cherry picking?
Well, I think that's where we get to the second finding. But remember, in order to get to the second finding, you have to successfully have been making significant progress. So if you've been making significant progress, and then you want to find that they're not consistent, if you look at the, the bottom part of required finding number two, um, whether local concerns have been affected by the relief granted do not outweigh the state and local need for low and moderate income housing. So that's, and, and that's why we've got the big scales there. This is the balancing test, and that's what this has always been about. This is, and, and as you said, the comp plan, we have a goal to preserve open space in our open space element. We have a goal to increase employment in manufacturing in our, in, in, in our comp plan. We have a goal to provide housing in our comp plan. You know, we have all these goals that are contradictory. And so, in general, even when you're doing any things, you're, you're balancing the different goals and the locations where they are. But particularly when you're, um, dealing with a comprehensive permit, I would say it's kind of like this picture of the scale that's tilted, because the thumb is already there saying housing. And then you would have to show that these other, um, these other needs outweigh the housing. And it's an individualized adjustment for, you know, determination for each project. How greedy are they really being? How many units, you know, where is the traffic issues? How much are the, um, you know, how much are they doing with your sewer capacity if they're on sewer? You know, you have to look at all those things and weigh it, um, and hope that what you, if you do find that it outweighs the needs for the housing, that the, the court will agree with you. But remember, to even get to that, you have to have the significant progress.
It seems like it's more like a boulder than a thumb.
Well, part of it is that the community plan is, a lot of it's aspirational, so it's not identifying needs at all. So you're, what you're getting to weigh on one side is not a need, but housing has been defined as a big freaking need.
Okay, well, well, that is true. That's, that's what it is. I mean, there have been more than three dozen bills out of the General Assembly in the last three years with land use stuff. And they're not all housing, but I think more than 30 of them have been, they, they've all been related to, even the ones that, you know, e-permitting, which we can't say that's a housing bill, but the rationale for it was to speed up housing production. All these bills that are limited to just cutting red tape and speeding up approvals are based on the theory of they're going to speed up housing approvals as well. So, yes, that is true. So, again, don't, don't complain to me, complain to your state representative. And, you know, complain to Joe Schicci. That's, that is, that is the fact that they have, they have come out down with. I also, I just want to say, it's nothing new. The concern with housing goes way back. It goes back to after World War II and the GI Bill and all the FHA stuff and there, all the housing stuff. And it even goes back further, to some extent, with Herbert Hoover in the 20s and whatnot. The idea is, the theory, and I'm not going to say it, the theory is that homeowners are better for the country. People who, people who own homes have more of a stake in the country, whether it be Jefferson Yeoman farmers, or Roman citizens, but if you own a home, you have more stake, you're less likely to be an unruly mob upsetting, upsetting the republic if you have a stake in it by owning a home. And at least for about the last 100 years, and look at the IRS, the big thumb, or the big boulder on the tax returns with making home mortgage interest deductible, okay? So, I know this seems really bad, but it's also not that, it's just more of what there is, has been, and is, you know, already in effect. So, if you, if you take that mindset, it maybe will become a little easier to swallow. Or, or you know you've got to change 100 years of history. So, um, required findings three, this is about whether they're integrated or compatible in scale. Yeah, and this is the thing, this is a 75%, I'm pretty sure it's a 75% number. I think that's just a mistake on the earlier slide.
Yeah, this, this is more understandable.
Right, yep. And, and the integrated throughout, in answer to the question earlier, I would say, yes, they have to have access to the same facilities that the other people. They don't have to have the same amenities in their units, but they have to be, if there's a common area or whatnot, you know, they can't be, oh, the affordable units don't get to use a swimming pool or anything like that. They have to be, have the same right to everything there. The architectural style we talked about with more details, and then, um, it's still here that they have to be built and occupied in proportional manner with the construction and occupancy of the market rate units. So you can't build all the market rate units first and leave the affordable for after. Yes?
According to the requirement, they have the same number of bedrooms as the market rate, that's actually not.
That's not a requirement, nope.
As long as they're 75%.
Right, you can't, right, you can't, you know, you can't require them to be less than three, but if the developer wants to build, you know, 1,500 square foot, two-bedroom units for their affordable units, and, you know, 2,000 square foot, three-bedroom units for their market rate units, they can. And then number, the, the continued here, this is just the thing about the 55 or older, they don't have to meet it, those requirements. And then four, whether there be significant negative impacts on the health, safety of current or future residents of the community in areas but not limited to safe circulation of pedestrian vehicles. This is the same stuff that's been there before, um, but just remember, you first have to be making significant progress before you get anywhere on it. And basically, you know, again, even this, you're balancing these against the need for Finding six, five, and six, um, these are old one, two, adequate permanent access to a public street. They don't have to have frontage, they just have to have the access to it. Or if you approve something else, a private road. And whether it will result in creation of individual lots with physical constraints for development, unless open space or public pur- for public purpose, this is stuff that's been there before.
Just back for a second to four, the preservation of natural, historical or cultural features. Isn't that in a way how character is defined?
Yeah, but cultural features isn't the design and density of existing housing. To my mind, cultural features is, cultural features is something part of the landscape, a natural feature or something like that. That's part of the natural. A cultural feature might be a significant Native American area. Something like that would be a cultural feature. I'm trying to think of an example here. And nothing comes to mind immediately, but, but that's what I would think of a cultural feature. I do not think of the fact that most of the houses are small, single-family homes are, are cultural features. Down on the shore, theater by the sea is probably a significant historical and cultural feature. But all the little cottages and stuff at some of the other developments aren't necessarily historical. Maybe the ones that are still intact and as, 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 you know, they are today are still, maybe they could become cultural features. But it would have to be something really significantly compact and intact like that to be a, a cultural feature. Or if you had, if you had some street, I'm just trying to think of, some cities like that have a particular alley, and it's still all original or something, even though it might not be a historical community, but it's still all original in this particular thing. I'm thinking of, thinking of actually, it's New York City, but a place where there was, there was this one particular area, and it was home for artists and actors, and it was a cottage-type development there, and it was like, you know, that one development. So that's a cultural feature in my mind, as well as a historical feature. The best way is historic preservation districts.
Access by a right-of-way over somebody else's property does not constitute permanent physical access, is that correct?
No, it would.
It would?
If you're, yeah. If it's deeded access and it, you know, meets all the requirements, it's wide enough and so forth, yes, it would. It just have to have the physical access to it.
But I don't think you can run sewer across somebody else's property, right?
Well, if you have the permission, I mean, if you have an easement, if you have an easement, and I mean, there's a whole question about what's the easement, you know, if someone has a historical easement to a lot from 100 years ago or whatnot, you know, there's a concept of overburdening the easement. That basically, the anticipated use when you were granted that easement was you'd have one house there. And now if you're putting 50 of them, you're overburdening that easement with all the traffic and everything from it. But let's just say you go next to your next-door neighbor and buy an easement today for the comp permit or buy an option first for the easement that you're going to have with your neighbor, and you're going to pay him a chunk of money for the right to put a, a two-lane paved driveway with utilities through the corner of his house to get to the, to get to the street, maybe at a different part, because where you've got the street, you've got wetlands or something, for whatever reason. But yes, that's, that's adequate access.
Is there, is there any relationship between the term impracticable and the now redefined hardship term?
I don't know. So, and then here's the summary about consistent with local needs, which is, you know, reasonable in view of the state need for low and moderate income housing, considered with the no, number of low and moderate, of low-income persons in the city or town affected, and the need to protect the health and safety of the occupants of the proposed housing or of the residents of the city of town, to promote better site and building design in relation to the surroundings. That's where if you've got, you know, I think fairly objective standards for your design standards, and if the local zoning or land use ordinance requirements and regulations are applied as equally as possible to both subsidized and unsubsidized housing. And that's nothing new, that's been there for a long time. You can't give the break to market rate housing and then say, okay, we're going to be strict with the affordable housing. So, any more questions on the comprehensive permit issues specifically?
How does it relate to mobile and manufactured homes?
They didn't really change, I don't have it in front of me, but it's, you get, if you've got them deed restricted or cooperatively owned, I think you get a full credit per unit of, 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 of mobile home. So where you have, like, some places where actually, you know, Rhode Island Housing has financed the buyout, where the owners have, have bought out a mobile home park. Or where someone has bought the, the rights so that basically they're, they're, they've, they've locked it in with the rates for affordability, then you can count them. Otherwise, I think you count them as one-half of an affordable unit.
Actually, I was asking that more the content of the, the right to build. So let's say we're in a R200 zoning district, five acres, you get 15 additional. Can somebody come in and put 16 mobile homes or manufactured homes on it?
Two. I can, I had to adjust this with the council. So the terminology mobile home is an old term. It's pretty, and I'm, I'm not going to quote the dates exactly, but early 1970, the federal government required a new definition and standard for what was historically termed as a mobile home. And that was early, like, 1972, 1971. It took the Housing and Urban Development Department almost four years to develop standards. And that happened in mid to late 1970, where the terminology mobile home no longer existed because there was now a new standard for those types of units that were built on a chassis that had its own axle. And those were now termed manufactured homes. So the manufactured home terminology came in in the late 70s and has existed since then. I think there's, you know, the, the norm is something that comes on a trailer that doesn't get removed with the axle is a mobile home. But that definition changed in the late 70s. With the legislator just, legislation just solidified, is that change in 1970 to a manufactured home, which doesn't necessarily meet a modern stick-built home building code, but meets the HUD definition of a manufactured home established in 1970, has to be treated in the same manner as a single-family stick-built or factory-built home. So again, someone, to Joe, to your point, if a town had a prohibition against manufactured homes on a single-family lot, you can no longer do that. The manufactured home meets that definition, definition under federal law, it has to be treated in the same manner as a stick-built home. So there's really three types of homes under there. There's a manufactured home, which is pulled to the site on a chassis with an axle. Then there is a prefabricated home, which is a lift off of a chassis, dropped on a foundation, no steel chassis, no axle, and then stick-built or pre, you know, tilted up.
Right, the problem is manufactured, people think of confused with factory-built.
Yeah.
Right. That's, I think you would, yeah. If, I mean, if you had someone, it, it's, it's probably correct. If someone wanted to create like a new manufactured home park based on it being a comp permit, I'm going to put 100 manufactured homes. I'm going to put 100 trailers here, 25 of them will be affordable. The others will be market rate. You know, we would initially apply our ordinance, but they would be able to get relief from all of these things under the comprehensive permit, conceivably.
Actually, I believe the new legislation is a manufactured home can be considered no differently than a single-family home. So anywhere you allow a single-family home, you have to now allow a manufactured home, which is a home built on a chassis.
Well, there was a lot of conversation in the General Assembly when they were discussing what would be credited and talk about variations within manufactured homes. And that may, that conversation may come back again.
And that's, I have a handout that I gave to the council, I will forward it to the planning board, I think. But to Joe's point, typically there was a mobile home, a manufactured home, and a stick-built home. And everybody equated a manufactured home to just a house that was built in the factory, delivered to the site, lifted off via crane and set on a foundation. But that's not what the legislation in 1970 did. In 1970, it made a mobile home a manufactured home so long as it met the federal standard. The things built in a factory not on a chassis are kind of those prefabricated homes in a factory, not a manufactured home in the definition of HUD. So I have, I have like a 10-page handout on that, I will make sure that all of you get that.
Let's try to let Andy wrap this up.
Okay. So part two here, roles and responsibility. And I'm sure some of you have heard this before. Due process, there's two kinds of due process. There's substantive due process. Is the decision fair and objective? Meaning is it based on applying the facts before you to the law as it is now? And procedural due process is a notice and an opportunity to be heard. And we've got the note here, would a fair-minded person in attendance say that everybody was, everyone was heard who should have been heard, and that the decision-makers were impartial and free of outside influences? And I just want to say that, you know, that's, that's where we also have to worry about our, our main concerns with lawsuits and whatnot. And it's important, like I said, to make sure we have these fair and objective decisions, which are based on the standards. And it's also important, the notice and opportunity to be heard basically is the idea that, that the courts talk about the, not just so you have an opportunity to get up there and speak, but you have an opportunity that the, the decision-making body, you in this case, will be listening to them. There's a chance that they could change your mind by what they say in the public hearing. So if you've come in with your mind made up, then it's not procedural due process. It's not an opportunity to be heard. Even though you may have, you know, objective reasons for it. The other term we use to describe that is bias. So that's why we warn you about never speaking out about this stuff beforehand, or even actually afterwards, not to speak on it. And it's important that, you know, people come in and be able to, to think that they had an opportunity to maybe change your mind. Maybe they didn't change your mind, but at least they had that opportunity to change your mind. And that is, that is very important with due process. And, and a violation of that, you know, not only gets decisions overturned and attorney's fees, but also can rise to the level of a federal, a civil rights violation, depriving people of their due process under color of law. So, so it's very important. There's a little note here about long agendas and late nights, and yeah, it's a balancing act. And that, I think, also goes to Maria's question about, you have timeframes, they put these timeframes in. Do you get a lot of applications? You know, you may just have to have, and I say this with pain in my own heart, because I'm here, or one of us is here with you, but more meetings, you know? So that's it, or, or less workshop meetings and, and more meetings of just, you know, having hearings to get it done. So. Running orderly meetings, I mean, Robert's Rules is here, but Robert's Rules really doesn't apply because you're a small board. The chairman makes motions and so forth, or can make motions, which would not happen otherwise under Robert's Rules. There's a lot of Robert's Rules about procedural stuff, which is contrary to the Open Meeting Act, about reconsideration and things like that. So, but this is basically some of the key things about one person speaking at a time. And that's also very important to make the record, particularly with the tapes and whatnot. One person speaking at a time and speaking into a turned-on microphone, I would add for that. And you act through motions that should be specific and ensure everyone, including the public, knows what's being discussed and voted on. No, no, no whispering conversations between you, no matter what they're about, because the public has no idea what they're about. The public doesn't know if you're saying, my babysitter's leaving at nine, we've got to wrap this up, or this is, this is junk, we've got to hurry up and deny it. They don't know which of those things you're saying. So that's why it's just very important not to have those conversations. Everything there, when you're up there, should be into a turned-on microphone. Written decisions. This is part of this thing with, actually, just going back to the previous one, we talk about motions that should be specific. And this is a way to get written, written decisions help to be specific and make sure that everything is captured. And I know, you know, everybody has their ways. The old days, planners always had notebooks. I remember Tony Lackowitz and his, it happens to be, for those of you who follow on Facebook, it's Tony Lackowitz's birthday today, so I happened to be thinking of Tony, and I remembered he'd always have this notebook for each application where he'd always be making the stuff to, so make sure he didn't forget certain conditions or restrictions, you know? Something that the applicant agreed to on night two doesn't forget, get forgotten by night 12 when they're making the decision. However it is, those are the important things. Make sure it's specific. Set forth findings of fact and conclusions of law that are sufficient to enable judicial review. And I'll just remind you, you know, we talked about this recently as you've been getting into Unified Development Review and various stuff. You know, a finding of fact is not just restating the standard. It's including the word because in it and relating it to the facts, facts in front of you. The judge doesn't want to comb through the record to understand why you voted. We have a judge right now on the land use court who is, as I said, I think generally sympathetic to boards. So our job is to make it as easy as possible for him to do it so that he doesn't have to go through the records, oh, I don't want to go through this 200-page record to find it whatnot, you know, I'm just going to overturn it, you know, I'm just going to uphold it, or I'm going to remand it, throw it back to you, which they may do. So the best thing to do is have a good decision where the judge can basically learn the story of the application in the decision. Because the remand will just prolong it and lead to more complications. And along with that is the idea of having draft decisions in front of you. And that is a normal process for all planning boards around the state. And a lot of zoning boards as well. There's a staff, or Stark District Commissions too, there's a staff draft decision. And you may not like that decision, and then that's the point, that's why it's a draft. And you discuss it, and if a majority of the board feels that it's not the way you want to go, then you want to have a vote to direct the staff to draft a decision in the opposite direction. But obviously, we don't have time on all the stuff to wait until we get there. So some of that stuff has to be done ahead of time. 99%, 9, I don't know, 95% of the time, it seems to be not a problem with how the majority of the board wants to go. There are times, I remember one horrible time, I don't know if it was this board or the zoning board, I remember drafting two decisions for the board because it was kind of split. It was, so there was a decision to approve and a decision to deny, it's like, here it is. I mean, that's, that's once, I remember it over the last 30-some years. So, but in general, it's there. But it's, it's a normal process. And so, you know, if you But, it's, it's a normal process, um, and so, you know, if you, if you see that coming, it's, it's also possible to have, you know, to solicit the comments of the boards at intermediate stages, to solicit the comments of the board members, so everybody, including the applicant and Jamie, can say which way you're thinking. And get an idea, too, so he knows when that's going on. And then sometimes it's just, you know, as we've talked about, that it, it is very hard to deny a comprehensive permit. It's, it's less hard, but it's still hard to deny a lot of the subdivision or land development applications that come before you. The law is, you know, a lot of this stuff is that if they meet these standards, then you have to grant it. So, it's important that staff provide you with a legally defensible decision. So, that's, that's where it comes in, and it should be as specific as possible. And you can help with that, you can help with providing the specific examples, you know, my big, you know, you never wanna say, "She'll be adequately landscaped." You gotta be specific, tie it to a landscape plan, or, you know, "She'll have arborvitae at least six feet high planted on four-foot centers." Whatever it is, be specific for everybody's sake going forward. And as well as in your findings, if there are specific issues that, you know, we talked about cultural features, don't just say because of cultural features in the area, define those cultural features, or historic features, if you're coming to that point. So.
Um, Andy, so ordinarily, what, what we try to do, and have certainly done in the past, is have the ability at a certain point to ask staff to draft a motion with some basic criteria that we then go over at a future meeting. However, with the shortened timeframes and applicants aren't always willing to give us an extra week or two weeks or whatever, it's, I think a lot of the time they are, depending, but it's the whole perception that we get from the public that this is a done deal, you've got a draft motion, we haven't even closed the public hearing, what if, you know, new information or changes to the plan, so it makes us look bad.
I, I understand the concerns, and it's kind of contradictory saying it's very important for you to look like you don't have your ma, mind made up. But, um, it is with staff, I mean, the other thing I would just say about the timeframe is, I know there's a desire to carefully deliberate on stuff, but I would suggest at some point with some of these, you're gonna just have to move quicker and not debate and deliberate all the little stuff that you want. Focus on the big stuff that matters and, and get a thing out. I mean, if worse comes to worse, you can vote without a draft decision. Though, the law, there's a case that basically says it's the vote of the board that's tolls that time period, if you've got so many days to do it, it's when you vote, it's not when the decision gets recorded. But, it obviously gets a lot harder if, you know, then the decision is being written afterwards, and you have to get a lot in there verbally. But if you have to, you can always do it. If, if you're there, you're at the deadline and the, and you expected the applicant to give you more time and suddenly they won't, then you can still take the vote at that point.
Also, we have a very outdated brochure that is in the town clerk's office and in the planning office that describes sort of the land use process. Are you aware of any other communities that have attempted to put this in a understandable brochure so that it's available to the public, whether it's a hard copy brochure, or on the website, or something like that, to make it easier for the public to understand?
Hmm, I'm not aware of any for the public. I mean, the stuff that we get, you know, is, we get the stuff for us, for the lawyers and for the board members to understand it, but for the public to understand it, um, no, I don't think.
Maybe we'll be the first one.
I don't think anybody wants to put in writing the bluntness that I have perhaps displayed today as far as with the General Assembly. So, I don't think anybody has prepared a, a written thing on it.
We could be the first one.
Well.
Or make a YouTube video.
But, but, but the question is, just how are you gonna do it? How are you gonna, people, you could, you could give this to everybody, they're not gonna read it. So, how are you gonna, how are you gonna condense this to one or two pages? How are you gonna even do that?
You could use visuals in addition to some of the language, you could simplify the language.
Well, okay. Maybe you could.
Susan?
I'll be so brief. So, we have a big fat project ahead of us, that it's a comprehensive permit, and we're really not going to be able to deny it. But there's an audience full of people who are trying to be heard and are trying to effect change up here, but we have a motion that's already been distributed for approval. So, optically, it looks like the fix is in. And we are now being told we can't articulate to the audience what, what is, what we're dealing with up here. So, how do we not look like we're not listening and we're not, yeah, there's something going on that they don't know about because we're just approving everything, or so, optically, it doesn't look good for us. So, how do we, if we're already distributing a motion for approval while the hearing is still going on, then we really aren't able to weigh their, their, their insistence that we listen. How, like, that's, it's a little dance that I don't understand, and I don't like people yelling at me as they walk out the room.
That's what you get paid the big bucks for. Unfortunately, I mean, I'll just, I'll back off a little bit and say, during deliberation, I think that's the time that you can say, you know, "We have to apply the law, this is what the standards are, they've met the standards, whether we like them or not, this is what our General Assembly has adopted as the law, and this is what we have to do." If you're, you know, if you've closed the public hearing and you're in deliberation, you can say those things. But beyond that, I mean, that's unfortunately the thing. I mean, it never was a popularity contest, and it still isn't, and sometimes, you know, first of all, you've gotta remember, you have a big crowd of people, but it's probably only a very small section of the town. It's mostly the people who probably live around that particular project, okay? So, I think you have to remember that. It's skewed, it's not like, oh, the public is all against us. So, you have to look at that, and you have to look at it and say, "Yeah, I'm sorry, I know all these people are against it, but that's not how our system is set up. It's not based on a referendum." We are not Massachusetts where zoning is, zoning amendments are done by town meeting. So, that's, you are quasi-judicial board in that, in this capacity, and so you have to apply the board, the laws, even if all the people there don't like it. You don't have that luxury in Massachusetts, you know, the, the town meeting can adopt it, and then the Attorney General can strike it down, saying, "Nope, that's inappropriate." And they have to go back. And the Attorney General doesn't have to worry about it unless it's in the one town that he or she lives in. So, they got, you know, two-hundred-and-ninety, two other opportunities to, to strike it down with it. I'm sorry, you know, I don't like it either, I don't like going out being afraid my tires are gonna be slashed, but, um, that's, that's what you have to do sometimes. And it.
Thank you. But I also don't want them to feel like, "I shouldn't even bother showing up, they're gonna vote for this project, I've already seen it in the paperwork, so I shouldn't even bother coming out and speaking my mind because clearly they're gonna vote for it."
Well, what you should be speaking your mind is trying to convince your fellow members why they should not adopt this motion, but instead do a motion to deny. That's what you should be doing. What are the reasons, what are the reasons? We got all the findings here, what reasons do you have to apply the findings that should be to deny? That's, that's what it should be. And if you convince a majority of them, then, um, then that's what you're gonna do. And if we have to go to court, we have to go to court. But, I just urge you, it, you know, it can't be based on community character, and, um, and you can't, it really can't be based at this point on a thing saying, "Oh, you know, we're just confident we're meeting this, we're doing great, we got a brand-new comprehensive permit housing element, comprehensive plan housing element, and, and do it that way." You've gotta look for the specific things and make those findings and the balancing to, to be able to do it. And, and a lot of the time, you're not gonna be able to do it. Just like, you know, there's a lot of subdivisions that come in, it's like, "Yeah, jeez, we don't wanna approve this." But, they check all the boxes, and so we don't have the discretion to deny it.
Thank you, Andy. Assuming you don't have, after this, any update on legal issues or anything?
No.
All right.
I, I will, I will keep you informed. There's all sorts of bills being filed, but it's just way too early to tell which ones, if any, are gonna have tractions or whatnot. I will tell you one suggestion I made to the, um, the, the local, the plant, the Legislative Committee of the Rhode Island Chapter of the APA, was, "Let's look for a bill that we could maybe use to correct the ADU ordinance." We may not like what it's there, but even leaving the substance that we don't like necessarily, let's at least clean it up so it makes sense and doesn't have all the internal consistencies. That, that's at least what I am going to try to focus on, seeing if we can do, if we can at least clean that up a little bit, um, so that it makes sense, not, not changing the substance, they want these, you know, ADUs everywhere and so forth, okay, but let's at least, to your point about making it understandable to people, let's, let's try to do that. So, that's, that's just my personal, that's my personal thing that I'm gonna try this year.
A worthwhile endeavor.
I, I don't feel I can try more than one, one, one element at a time.
Yep, yep. Let's just move on quickly, anything with planning board liaison?
Oh, I wanted to say one other thing, 'cause there was another handout here for you. This one pager, which we owe to Brian, and, and the front part is just basically the statute, it is a statute, and the second part is where he's created a little check of, a little flowchart, if you will, to work your way down, breaking up the stuff on the first page to the second page. And we think it's helpful. So, it's the sort of thing to have with you, think it kinda helpful as you're going through this stuff and looking at it.
Thank you, Brian.
And maybe this is a sort of thing, without the word checklist or something, you know, maybe this is the sort of thing you wanna circulate to the public.
Yep.
Uh, maybe this is a one-page thing that might work.
This, this is also the kind of thing that we could, when we start our deliberations, we can walk through this as a group.
Okay, sorry, now I'll, now I'll shut up.
I think the problem we face is the, the first line, legally competent evidence contained in the record. We have a lot of people show up and voice their objection, and it's only their personal opinion, it's not based on expert testimony, 'cause we hear the experts, and we never hear a contrary expert that would give us the basis to decide that, no, we accept B rather than A's interpretation.
Right.
And I don't think they understand that that's what the, what our, our guidelines are, is that it's with legally competent evidence that we have to base it on.
I, I, I agree with you, I don't know what the answer is, I mean, I've, I've had, over the years, I've rented, I've represented applicants, I've also represented objectors to various projects and various, in, in the, not in the cities and towns that we represent, but in the other thirty-four cities and towns, represented objector groups, and I know sometimes they're short on money. And I've told them, I said, "If you can't afford both a lawyer and an expert, skip me for now, hire the expert, you only get one bite at the apple, get the expert to testify at the hearing. And then, you know, I can, you can always maybe hire me later, and I've got something to work in, in court. But if I just go there, if you don't have an expert, I've got nothing to work with in court." So, I guess that's the one thing, you know, if you think you can tell people, if they wanna do it, they should be hiring their own experts to refute the facts. Because if you've got an expert, that, if you've got an expert on one side that's telling you X and another expert on, telling you Y, and they're both supported, you know, have reasonable qualifications and support, the chances are the judge, Judge Lanfear or any judge is gonna say, "You're the fact, you're judging them, you have the right to choose who you want with the credibility, so you, that's your one opportunity." But they've gotta get it to you. Now, you can, you can bootstrap a little bit of it on your own, you know, with your own peer-review people, experts, if their contradictions are contradictory, um, or your engineering staff. And sometimes you might find neighbors who might happen to be professionally qualified enough, and, you know, then you might wanna ask them questions to get their qualifications on the record. You know, you, you speak like someone who's knowing, "Do you have a degree in this? Do you work in this?" So, usually, they'll tell you that anyway. So, you know, that's, that is one way to do it. But I don't know how you go out and tell people that otherwise, other than a one-to-one thing of saying, "Hire your own experts, that's the best way to fight it."
Thank you, Andy. Let's move on, do we have anything from any planning board liaison activities? Joe, anything? Jamie, anything, any updates from planning staff?
I think ju, just a reminder is, again, that meeting on January twenty-sixth, sorry, February, for some reason, I'm going backwards this year, on February twenty-sixth, starting at seven PM. So, if we have any information for you prior to that meeting, we'll distribute it to the planning board also.
And a reminder that our regular mating, meeting would be that Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. Thank you, everyone. The twenty-fourth is the Tuesday, I think, and the, and the twenty-sixth is a Thursday?
No, it's a Thursday.
It's a special meeting.
So, you have a meeting on the twenty-fourth on a Tuesday. The workshop session between Able City East on the Form-based Code and the Town Council is Thursday evening, February twenty-sixth, February, I mean.
And you said that's now at seven PM?
Seven PM.
Seven PM. Work that down.
Here, here, correct.
All right, meeting adjourned, everyone, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Did we have a vote?
Yes, I just said meeting adjourned, I didn't do a motion.
We need a motion.
We do, motion to adjourn, folks.
I'll make that motion.
Caper, motion, second from Joe, all does in favor, say aye.
Aye.